I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next is a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Jim, seconded by Lou. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the March 20, 2019, regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Jim, seconded by Lou. Any changes, errors, or omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Before we get to our audit presentation, I did want to bring the Sleckman's attention to a handout that I gave you. We're not going to talk about this tonight, but it is something you had asked, which is the fixed assessment tax abatement that's been calculated by our assessor. And using this year's mil rate, if the maximum abatement was to be received over three years at that rate, it would be a total of $5,771.87.
The only thing I, Susan?
Yes.
The only thing I wanted also was what they, what the project was paying prior to becoming this, if we could just know that number. Because I think that's important.
Yeah, I think it was just, was there a house there, Ben?
I want to say there was an old structure.
Okay.
Pretty sure there was. It's dilapidated, but I believe there was.
I will ask about that. Thank you.
I'm just curious, just to show what it-
What it had been.
Yeah, and you know, what now we're receiving versus what we were.
Very good.
Thank you.
And then we'll put it on a future agenda. Thank you. Anybody else need any more information? I also want to call your attention to the fact that we have a potential for a brewery. The town has been approached, and we may bring to you some changes in one of our ordinances. There's probably going to need to be some changes in this ordinance about food and itinerant vendors, as well as in the zoning regulations. So I just want to bring that to your attention. We haven't quite drafted what the changes would be, but it's something we're working on, would be in the industrial zone in that area. So we're happy to entertain this, and we'll bring you some information on that.
And for the record, I know one of the participants in that. I was actually-
I do, too.
Yeah, so, but I don't believe in any way that will affect the board.
It's a person who lives in our town. So we're very excited about this possible opportunity. So we will now have Mahoney Sable, Mike Van Deventer, and Heather, is it Siegner, are here tonight. They are our auditors, and we welcome you once again. Nice to have you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Again, it looks like you have some new members on the board that I haven't seen in the past. So again, my name is Mike Van Deventer. I'm a partner at Mahoney Sable, ultimately responsible for overseeing and issuing the audit reports on behalf of the firm. Heather was the audit supervisor on the engagement, and she was ultimately responsible for the day-to-day fieldwork. As in the past, I have provided a presentation, and I will go through the presentation. You should have a copy of the actual financial statements for the town, as well as a state single audit report. Certainly encourage you as board members to go through those documents and ask questions of management. And certainly, if you have any questions for me this evening, I'd be happy to answer those as well. In terms of the presentation, if we can jump into Slide 2. In terms of the scope of work, again, we did perform an audit of the financial statements of the town. We followed both the auditing standards issued by the AICPA, as well as the government auditing standards issued by the Government Accountability Office. In addition to the financial statement audit, we also performed a state single audit in accordance with the State Single Audit Act. The town was not required to have a federal single audit this year. The threshold for requiring a federal single audit is $750,000, and the town's federal awards that were expended were approximately $625,000. In addition to the state single audit, we also performed agreed-upon procedures on the end-of-school-year reports, which is the education financial system. Those procedures are required by the State of Connecticut Department of Education. Any questions as far as the scope of work?
Any savings without that other audit?
It's all factored into the fee. Yep. In terms of the overall reports that are issued, the main report that we issue is the report on the financial statements. We did issue unmodified clean opinions on your financial statements for the town. It does cover your governmental activities. Also, the discreetly presented component unit, which is the Gilder, Sleew, Wheeler Educational Trust. Our opinion covers each of your major funds, which is your general fund, your capital projects fund, as well as your capital and non-recurring fund. In addition, we issue an opinion on what we consider to be the aggregate remaining fund information, and that includes all of your non-major special revenue, your internal service, your permanent, your pension trusts, your private purpose trusts, and your agency funds. So again, a lot of information is included in that financial statement. In addition to the report on the financial statements, we also issue a report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting. It's important to note here that we are not actually expressing an opinion on your compliance with laws and regulations, or on the effectiveness of your internal control. During the course of performing our audit, if we identify what we consider to be a material non-compliance with a law or regulation, or a material weakness in your internal control structure, we're required to include it in this report, and we did not identify any such matters. In connection with the state single audit, we issue a report on compliance and on internal control at the state financial assistance level. Here, we do actually express an opinion on your compliance with major programs. For fiscal year 2018, your total state financial assistance expended was about $5.7 million. Of that, about $1.4 million was considered non-exempt and subject to our compliance audit. The major programs for the town was the Open Choice Program, as well as the recreational trail program. We did issue unmodified clean opinions on your compliance over those programs. And again, we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over compliance for those programs. All right? So overall, again, in terms of reporting, very clean from an audit perspective. All right? This next section, I'll just run through some overall financial highlights that I think would be important for you as board members. This first slide goes over your general fund budgetary highlights, and that is included on page 21, if you're going to reference that later. Your original and final budget contemplated the use of fund balance in the amount of about $300,000 to balance your revenues and expenditures. There were no additional appropriations that were authorized. Your actual net change in fund balance on a budgetary basis was an increase of $63,000. So that did result in an overall favorable budgetary variance of about $364,000.
So Mike, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes.
So that means we did not use the $300,000.
Correct.
And in addition, another $63,000 and change-
Went to fund balance.
Was to fund balance.
Yep. All right. And that variance was driven by revenues which were about $594,000 less than budgeted. And that was primarily due to the shortfalls in the state grant revenues, which were offset by both favorable property tax collections and interest income. And your overall expenditures and transfers out were about $958,000 less than budgeted, and that primarily was due to favorable budgetary results across all of your departments. And again, there are detailed budget-to-actual schedules included in the financial statements. We did not have any audit adjustments that impacted your general fund. So again, the information that you're getting on a monthly basis, these numbers will agree with that information.
Any questions on that on the board?
I did put a bullet in here, and just, you've had some questions in the past regarding debt service. For fiscal year 2018, your actual debt service represented about 6.1% of your actual budgetary expenditures. Again, from a municipality perspective, we usually see this between 5% and 10% of the overall budget. And again, we did not identify any budgetary instances of non-compliance. The next slide goes over your governmental funds financial highlights, and that again is on pages 16 and 18 of the financial statements. The town did report a combined ending fund balance of about $8.6 million. That was a decrease of about $619,000 from the prior year. That total fund balance consists of about $6.5 million in your general fund. Again, that was an increase of about $33,000 from the prior year. Your capital projects funds did report a deficit of about $912,000, which was an increase in the deficit of about $548,000 from the prior year. That increase in the deficit primarily reflects capital outlays that were incurred in connection with project authorizations that were subsequently funded by the issuance of bonded debt. So that, majority of that is a temporary deficit. In terms of your capital non-recurring fund, you did have a fund balance of about $1.5 million, which was an increase of about $242,000 from the prior year. And then, the remaining fund balances were included in all of your other non-major funds. The total fund balance there was about $1.6 million, and that was a decrease of about $347,000 from the prior year. When we look at your governmental funds, you know, one of the things that we've communicated in the passing and continues to be a little bit of a struggle is the sewer operating and the water operating funds. Those do continue to report a deficit fund balance. The sewer operating fund had a deficit fund balance of about $657,000, and the water operating fund had a deficit fund balance of about $456,000. And so overall, the year-over-year change has decreased in terms of that deficit, as you have implemented rate increases. Again, something to continue to consider from a budget perspective in terms of looking to eliminate those deficits in the future. The next slide goes over your government-wide financial statements. And so this includes your governmental funds converted to a full accrual basis of accounting, so it includes all of your capital assets, as well as any related debt. The focus of the government-wide financial statements is really on your overall long-term liabilities that do not get recorded in your governmental funds financial statements. The one thing I'll point out is that the town did implement a new GASB standard, GASB Statement Number 75, Accounting and Financial Reporting for Post-Employment Benefits Other Than Pensions. That did result in a decrease in your beginning net position of about $2.9 million. So again, we knew that standard was coming. This information was always disclosed in the financial statements, really just put the overall net liability onto the financial statements. On a government-wide basis, the town does report an overall unrestricted net deficit of about $6.1 million. And again, that does reflect your liabilities for pensions and other post-employment benefits that are being funded by the town over time. In terms of the town and police pension plan, the funded status of that plan was about 67%. That is using a discount rate of about 7.5%. The discount rate is the most significant assumption that is utilized in determining this estimate. We have seen the discount rates start to come down a little bit in terms of what municipalities are using. The rates are typically between 6.5% and 7.5%, so you are kind of on that high side, but certainly still a reasonable discount rate. The State of Connecticut just reduced their discount rates from 8.5% to 8%, and I think they'll be looking to decrease it another half a percent in the near future. Your overall net pension liability for that plan is about $9.5 million, and that was a decrease of about $284,000 over the prior year. In terms of your volunteer firefighter benefit plan, the funded status of that plan was about 24%, and that's using a lower discount rate of about 6%. Your net pension liability for that plan is about $915,000, and that stayed relatively stable from the prior year. In addition, again, as I mentioned, you did implement the new accounting standards on other post-employment benefits. Your total OPEB liability that is associated with retiree healthcare benefits for eligible employees totaled about $3.6 million. Again, that was a decrease of about $92,000 over the prior year. You do currently fund those obligations on a pay-as-you-go basis. In that liability is primarily the implicit rate liability, so it's not an actual cash outlay as the retirees are paying the full amount of the premium. Any questions as far as the other post-employment benefits?
You talked about the liability for the payout for the insurance. Is that for all town employees, or is that just for police or fire?
There is a combination of employees that are involved in that calculation. The majority of it is, relates to the retiree benefits for the state teachers, retirement system.
Right.
Yep. And then the next bullet here, yes?
When you, on the page where you talked about the funded status of the town police pension at 67% and the volunteer firefighters at 24%, how does that stack up with other towns in Connecticut? I mean, there's-
There's not a specific range, per se. It depends on the plan. Again, looking at the volunteer firefighters plan, when did you start funding that plan, Tom?
That was a pay-as-you-go-
It was a pay-as-you-go.
I got here, I think, in 2012-ish, we implemented that, and do a Vanguard usual fund situation.
Okay, yeah.
That's increased quite substantially since that date, but the majority of the contributions go in as payout, but there is obviously investments now that before were only in New England, with Pacific Health.
Right, okay. So there is some guidance out there that looks at pension plans that are between 80% and 100% as being well-funded pension plans. Again, I think I see a lot of the pension plans between 60% and 80%. The important thing is, again, to monitor your discount rate and continue to make your annual required contributions. If you continue to do that, then, over time, that funding percentage should go up. I do have a bullet here on the state teachers retirement system. Again, the net pension liability and the net OPEB liability that were attributed to the town's Board of Education's employees totaled about $30.4 million and $7.8 million respectively. So again, those liabilities are carried by the state, as the town has no leaveover requirement to fund those obligations. I know there's, it's a significant financial strain on the State of Connecticut, and they've had discussions about pushing some of those costs downs onto the municipalities. You can just see with the size of those liabilities that are just associated with the town of Portland, they do represent a significant liability to the Any questions as far as the overall, again, financial highlights?
Just on this particular issue, what is the OPEB payment, $2.3 million?
So that is the amount that the state paid on behalf of the town, Portland's retirees, into the state teachers retirement system, the contribution that would have been made, similar to the contribution that you would make on your annual required contribution into your pension plans. All right, this next section goes over our required communications. And again, these communications are really geared towards when the auditor runs into significant issues during the audit, so my communications will be brief. The first bullet here talks about our responsibilities under our auditing standards. Although we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, the financial statements are the responsibility of management. All of the information that is included in the financial statements does come from the town. Again, it's our responsibility to perform our audit procedures and express our opinions on the financial statements. In terms of the plan scoping and timing of the audit, there were no changes in the overall scope of work that was originally agreed upon. We did require a 30-day extension this year through January 30th, which was requested in order to allow management to review the financial statements. That was really due to the necessary leave-of-ab absence that was taken by the Director of Finance. So really, no issue there from an oversight perspective. In terms of significant audit findings, again, we do look at your accounting policies and practices. Some of the things I just want to note, again, that management is responsible for the selection and the use of the appropriate accounting policies, which are disclosed in Note 1 to your financial statements. Management did appropriately implement the requirements of GASB Statement Number 75 on OPEB. And again, that did result in adjustment to your beginning net position, and, as well as some additional disclosures in Note 12 to the financial statements. And again, we, management did appropriately disclose the issuance of the $10 million in general obligation bonds that were issued in August 2008 as a subsequent event in Note 17 to the financial statements. Other than that, everything in the financial statements is very comparable to prior years. Overall, there were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We had no uncorrected misstatements. If during the course of performing our audit procedures, we identify an adjustment that management does not want to record, again, we're required to inform you of that. We had no disagreements with management. We did obtain a management representation letter. There was nothing unusual included in that letter. And again, we were not aware of any consultations with any other independent accountants. If we had, we would have to communicate that to you as well. So that concludes our presentation of the overall audit results. Happy to answer your questions at any point in time down the road, just if you want to just filter those through Tom. That'd be great.
Thank you very much, Mike. Tom, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Just wanted to appreciate and thank the Mahoney Sable for doing a good job. We got it out again.
And congratulations on a clean audit, Tom, as you have had for all of your, I think, 11 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public comment? The next item is appointment of the auditor of public accounts, which is something we do every year, so that we can be prepared to do the next set of books. Resolve pursuant to Section 407 of Portland Town Charter, the Board of Sleckman hereby appoints the firm of Mahoney Sable, 180 Glastonbury Boulevard, Suite 400 Glastonbury, to audit the books and records of the town for the fiscal period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make it.
By Ralph, seconded by Jim. Any discussion?
Any price change?
$500 increase?
I think I beat you up out of it one time, so.
Yeah.
Jesus.
I got the one.
Maybe the-
There we go. Got it.
As long as we don't talk, we're okay.
Who was speaking?
That came pretty good.
I think it was, was it Ben?
Yeah, I was good. I was done.
Are you done?
I think we're back to you, Susan.
All right. Anybody, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Guess you get to work pretty soon on the next year.
It's a never-ending cycle, but thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure. Have a good night. The next item is another matter that comes before the board annually, and that is the tax suspense list. These are items that Nancy DiGeralimo, who is our certified collector of revenue, estimates are, while she'll collect them, they are likely not to be collected. So in order to give a clear indication of what we believe the value of the uncollected debts are, she has listed on the pink sheet in front of you, the various accounts for a total of $13,092.26 that would be put on a suspense list. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Lou, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion?
All right, I went through this. There are some that, I think some people still live in town, some people live out of town. What's the chance? But it looks like the state, of course, won't let them drive because they don't have registration.
If they're going to register another vehicle, that these debts would have to be paid typically.
So what is our recourse to collect our money, I guess?
There's an ongoing attempt to collect these, but she makes the estimate that these are not likely to be collected. Doesn't mean that she wouldn't collect them, and if you know of the whereabouts of some of the individuals, you can contact Nancy and give her that information. Tom, did you want to add anything to that?
I believe on that list, did she, they including things that were, had come back, address unknown, undeliverable. We have not, we don't do the blanket suspenses we used to do as the board had said they didn't really like that as much. So we try to put on the ones that come up as unknown, or deceased, or bankrupt, or out of state. So those are the items that we did. I, I know, I got the list first. I reviewed it and tried to track down a few names of people that I had actually known or heard of, but, and then, you know, but he said, if you have information on somebody on the list and you know, let me know and send me their information and we'll send a bill out to them.
They are only motor vehicle.
Correct. Yeah, I believe, we left everything else on the, on the list.
Rick?
This is new to me, so I have a question. Essentially, what are, by tax suspend, are we just, we sort of like, kind of writing them off, so to speak, or?
Yeah, in theory, that's what it is. It's not, it's, I mean, the suspense, so the-
What do you do on your books?
Yeah, moves, there's, it moves, so the, the tax system has a suspense file and a non-suspense file. So these get moved out of the collectible receivable and go into the suspense file. And they're there, and if the people pay, or if someone tries to register, it'll flag, and then we'll get payment. There, you know, we do get tax suspense collections all the time. So the way, the, most, many municipalities will blanket, they'll say, two years, whatever, three years back, they'll blanket the suspense, whatever she had done in the past there. And then, that whole list moves, and it's, because they knew that they would get it from this, you know, when the person tries to reregister their vehicle. So it was a way to keep the receivable, clean receivable list. Previous boards wanted more, wanted people, wanted suspense to come to gist of things that were un, definitely, we thought were unknowns. So that's where we went with the more of motor vehicles that we felt were unknown, or if it was other items that were, you know, people are no longer around or available.
In some cases, they're deceased, so.
Correct.
Probably. That's going to be real tough to collect.
Yeah, I mean, the suspense is very, this is a very small number of-
And it's a small amount.
Small amount.
So this is all motor vehicle, though, these properties on?
The front sheet, would tell you, I don't have a copy of that.
This is a grand list motor vehicle, 2014 supplemental, and grand list 2015 supplemental. Only motor vehicles.
No, if we, I should know this by now. If we take these off the list, can they go to reregister the vehicle? Are they still responsible to pay for one?
Correct.
Or just basically zeroing it out for accounting purposes, but keeping it on the system?
It's, you're not like zeroing it out. You're taking it out of the current active receivable, and you're moving it into the suspense receivable.
So it's like the category way past the 90 days.
Sort of like writing it off, then, but.
But no, but I just wanted to make sure, if somebody went to, any one of these people went to register a motor vehicle, we would still get paid?
Yeah, you're, it's, you know, as you try to measure, the tax collectors try to measure their collectability based on the collectible rate. So when it gets to a point where it's not necessarily collectible, it's just driving down your collectibility rate. So you move those over to get your, your collectible in a position that's more accurate. You don't want to leave on, you know, remember accounting symbol, you don't want to leave on things that you know you're not going to collect. So you, they move that into the suspense, and then, when suspense does come through, it's, you know, we're happy.
So, quick question. On the ones that are flagged as deceased, if a relative gets the vehicle and goes to register, does it, does the bill stay with the vehicle, or is it, it's not, it's pointing to the individual, right?
You know, I would have to defer back to my collector on that. I don't know if I would get into that specifically to be able to answer it. I don't know if I would get into that specific to be able to answer it right off the top of my head.
Now, is there anything in place for the town to send the estates a bill at the time? You know, do we do that?
So the collector, the collector sends out bills throughout the year trying to collect back information, delinquent bills. The collector follows the policies of the state, and they will follow the procedures of the state. They follow the state statutes. They would follow whatever the state statutes require them to do, and they would follow those procedures.
Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Last night, the board did come together, and we did make several line item deductions and also some revenue changes. And the bottom line was a reduction of about, I'd say, $26,000. And additional revenues that were due to interest income and additional income for the structural permits, which we anticipate for the Brainerd Place. The net effect is a reduction in what had been in the budget I had presented to you, which was an increase of .81 mil. And it has been revised with the changes that the board made last night by .225 mil reduction. So the overall increase goes down to .585 mil increase. And that represents, given the mil rate that we have this year, approximately a 1.73% increase in the mil rate for next year. So the numbers are better in terms of tax payers. The actual number was $26,567. Is there any other discussion? I will say that Tom and I have not had a chance to put together all of the numbers, so these are still preliminary. And our plan will be to meet next week on the 10th, Wednesday. And at that meeting, we will have an official budget that we will give you with the details of the changes that have been made in accordance with what happened last night. And we will ask for a vote at that time. That budget then will get printed, put on our website, allows for people to review the budget. And then, the first Monday in May, there will be a town meeting. And then, following that, the second Monday in May, there will be a referendum vote on budget from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM at night. If need be, a second referendum can be held. So that is the general fund budget. In addition, next Wednesday, I'm going to put on the agenda, the water budget and the sewer budget. Because as you know, we passed that budget, that does not go to referendum. So we'll bring that to you next week as well. Any questions? Thank you, Jim. We'll move on to Item 10. Item 10 is the Brownstone Avenue land purchase, and I have an update for you and request. We have been asking the seller to test the oil pipeline that is in the road, as well as in the Bellageron's property, and then it goes down to the property that we're looking to purchase. And as you know, the oil had been removed from there, some cleanup had occurred, and then we asked that the pipe's integrity be tested using a nitrogen test. And they came back to us after a few iterations, and they said that it would be at 20 pounds per square inch. And I think it was Ben, and we all agreed with him, that we wanted it tested to a level that would be consistent with what the oil had been under when it was being utilized. And after asking Buckeye Pipeline, one of their agents who's been working with us, Patrick, came back and said a minimum of 50 pounds per square inch would be appropriate. So we brought that back to the seller. They've agreed to do so. They're asking that we split the cost for that. It's an additional $2,000. So I'm here to ask if you would be willing to pay $1,000 for the extra nitrogen that would be used. And as you know, we had already discussed the test itself, which is a much better price than the one that I had gotten a quote on. And you had agreed at closing that you would share that cost at, I believe, $2,500. So the total effect would be $3,500 for us. The other thing that we need to do, because as you know, we go in segments, we ask for a period of time. The 90 days is up this month, so I would ask at the same time that we extend up to 90 days. It doesn't mean we have to take 90 days, but it allows us time for that test to be done. It allows us time to review before the test is done, the actual specs that they will use. And I can certainly, and I will share that with the board, so they'll know before that test is done, I'll ask for that. And then it gives us time to review the results of that test before proceeding. Open up the questions.
Where are we getting the $3,500? I know we've talked about the purchase price possibly out of the man and all that, out of our fund, but where's the $3,500?
Well, I think, Ben, that it could come from a variety of sources. It could come from fund balance, because we don't have it budgeted per se within this budget. If there is money in contingency, which we don't know yet, because the year is not over, but that's another place that that could come from as well.
Much better price than the first one. It's given us the test with nitrogen that we wanted, at the pressure that we wanted it. Seems like it's a smart way for us to proceed.
I think it's very important that we get this done, because it's in our road, and this pipe should be tested to check its integrity. Also, as you know, the $750,000 cleanup pipe is, cleanup for the land is something that the state is holding for us. So I think we need to proceed and see if there's anything going on with this pipe.
Now, the $1,000, they're going to want that regardless, even if it fails. But the $2,500 is only at closing? Is that how we're doing this?
Well, I would, I would ask that it all be done.
Yeah.
They all at the closing.
That's what I...
But the way you said it earlier...
I'm sorry, I misspoke.
No problem. I'm, 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 so it would all be at closing?
That's what we had, that's what you had authorized.
We authorized the $2,500 at closing.
Right, but now...
So now, we'll authorize, if we do this, this would, additional thousand would also be at the closing. Would be what my two cents would be.
Right, in the beginning, it just said the cost was going to go up by 2,000. Would we split that? And I just wanted to make sure. So we're clear?
Because while the company that's doing the testing, as you know, because I sent you the emails, they said that they believe the 20 pounds per square inch was adequate. We're asking that it be increased.
No, I get that, and I think it's, first of all, very important that we at least get the pressure to an operating pressure. I think this is, if we are going down this road and we're to proceed, I think it's a no-brainer, we have no choice but to do this. This is cheap insurance for the rest of you. The last thing we want to do is pick up something that was problematic, so I'm sold already at the...
Do you want to make that motion then, Ben?
Not really, but okay. I think she asked. Like, make a motion to increase the number at closing from $2,500 to $3,500 for reimbursement of the testing at closing.
How about a friendly amendment to include also to add 90 days onto the existing work agreement?
I concur.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Motion's been made, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I answer. I think, I think it's a solid choice.
I think it's prudent, and I think that we, it should be accomplished. We need to know the integrity of this pipe regardless.
Well, yeah. Quick portion of it's under the road, like you said.
Yes. And we have...
And then we have responsibility for that.
Right.
Potentially. It's our role.
It's there, it's there of pipe, the owner's estate. However, we have people traveling on that road, and I think that it's very important that this be done.
What do we have for verbiage? What if they don't want to give us the results? I never, I should have studied that road a little further. We're entitled to the results. Can we write that in?
Well, the whole purpose is to tell us, right?
I know, but that's our purpose.
It's theirs too, because they want us to buy the property.
Well, not necessarily, if the results are what we want.
Well, I think, Ben, it will be part of the requirements that we're making as the purchaser. But I will speak with our attorney about that.
Yeah, I think we're...
It's part of our, we won't, we won't proceed without having this information.
Well, I was bringing up another, what if they don't want to release the information? What if they just stop the deal and they don't want to release the information? It's in our right of way, so why, if we're...
Then we'd have to probably bring suit in another way, which I'm not familiar with, but there might be another.
Okay.
Because it, because there are, there are some language in that easement, as you know, and there's probably other rights that we have, because it is in our right of way, but I'm not going to comment on that, because I don't, I'm a lawyer, so I don't...
Okay, just put it out.
Good point, good point. Are you ready for a question? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is appointments to boards and commissions, and I know we have a library board of director nomination. Rick?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Jay Brown for the open position on the library board of directors.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Any other appointments tonight? Okay, bring none. Refunds of excess payments, Jim?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we refund $16 to F40 Motorsports.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
I'll make another motion to refund $16 to F40 Motorsports.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
And I'll make one more motion in here to refund $14.03 to Stanley J. Trascos Jr. or Lorraine B. Trascos.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Status reports, is there any status reports tonight?
I have one on the airline.
Lou first.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, and maybe you're going to do the same one about the airline trail?
Nope, I'm not doing the airline trail. We're going to have the meeting.
On the airline trail, there has been some erosion, and the contractor that we have, Dicello, has dug a ditch so that the water will not go over the trail anymore, and it'll go to an area where it'll be drained and through pipes to another area that are, the pipes are already existing. And so that part of the trail will be complete, and all the other punch list items, which are very few, should be taken care of very shortly.
Can I ask you a question? Maybe you don't know the answer, but how's that East Hampton connection though? Is it, any, do you have any status on that?
Well, the only status I have on the East Hampton section is that the other day, the engineer from East Hampton called the contractor, who was the same contractor we have, to say, "We need you in East Hampton to continue working on the trail." Now, so far, the trail in East Hampton stops at Route 60, the underpass at Route 66. And if you go from that Route 66 section toward Depot Hill, it's about 1,200, 1,300 feet. So I'm going to make an assumption that the reason the engineer asked the contractor to come back is to finish that part. Now, how they're going to finish it, I'm not sure, but I think they're going to divert the water in some way and then complete the trail. The hope is that that trail will be complete by June.
Wow, okay.
So actually, the meeting that I was at, when they talked about that, because I asked the same question, because I had walked down to where the water was, they had indicated that the discussion was, the idea was to move the utilities up out of that area between the stone, move it up on either side on the hill, and create some sort of a boardwalk across that area. So I don't think they're, they're going to let the water flow. I think they're just going to come up with a strategy, how to go over it. Is that, because I asked that exact question in the last meeting I was at, and that was the response that I got.
There's, it's like, it's like a brook through there.
Yeah. They'd have to divert that water some way, but at the same time, a boardwalk would raise it up over the water, and that would work. So there's, it looks like the Portland to Putnam line is coming.
Nice.
Cool. Ralph?
So I didn't attend the last library board meeting. I wasn't available, but I know they're working hard on getting revised plans of the work that they're going to do. They had made a number of suggestions and changes, so they're waiting for that to come back. And with regards to, with regards to the park, I would just probably make two things. One is that obviously, we've gotten through the tough part of the weather, and their intention is to be back out there on Monday to begin in full earnest to work towards completing it. The only problem we're running into right now is, we do have a problem when, like, the windsday were horrible and the dust was a problem. They've been notified about it, and they're going to be watering it down to, to take care of that case. I know some people encountered it today, so they are aware of it and they're going to remediate it. So it's moving along. They, they're doing some drawings for the buildings, and so they'll be hitting hard on the, putting in the fields, probably starting on Monday. That's the first thing I think they're going to attack is the fields. And they're going to go through them pretty quickly, it sounds, so.
Thank you, Lou. Thank you, Ralph. Have a comment? General informal discussion?
Other than, I was going to say, other than congratulations on another clean audit.
Very nice.
Thank you very much.
Did also.
Under follow-up, we, I gave you some information. We'll get some more on the 185 Marlboro Street fixed assessment application. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Seconded by Lou. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.